The uh, this is a special call meeting for the purpose of reviewing the items on this agenda. It was called by three council members and JJ reached out to me with the uh, notice. And so, I'm just gonna go ahead and turn this over to, I guess JJ to start.
Is there anyone can ask more questions over there first?
Sure.
Um, did you, we know we were talking about mail, my mail was literally delivered as I was pulling up driveway to come here. Did you hear anything back on that?
I have not yet.
Okay. I just wanted to check.
I'll go back into it, but last I heard they were, there's not anything going on in that.
Okay, alright, that was just my question. Sorry Jimmy.
No, you're totally on it.
Uh, not for a work session. It is work, it is a session.
A whole work session.
Yeah, anything we'll vote, if we vote on, anything we'll vote on is next week. I think that would give us some time to.
What is this?
Business, work session, special call, city council work session.
So, uh, the reason that I wanted to call this meeting, I spent a lot of time last week running around the city. I know several other members of city council did the same, spent some time talking to folks, talking to current employees, former employees. Talking about the water and sewer department, looking at some leaks in town in real times, they were springing up. There's still a bunch of different things that, it wasn't that they weren't on our radar before. I just think that they really got thrust front and center last week by, you know, the, the very serious things that was happening. And it led me to believe that we are missing a key piece of, um. I, I think we're missing a key piece in city hall and there, there are a lot of things that have been running slowly or not running very well. Uh, and I think that, that is partially because as the city has grown, we have not grown the actual administrative, uh, organizational structure to meet the needs quickly enough. Um, and so, you know, there, there have been some really bright moments, I would say, being city government for the past six months. But it also does kind of feel a lot like drinking out of a fire hose a little bit, I feel like. And, um, this fire hose is, is leaking and stuff too, right? So it's all these problems that we're having. Um, I, I feel like sometimes we are talking about the same thing, meeting after meeting, without a lot being done. And not a lot of accountability outside of being able to just kind of, um, you know, harass the mayor some more. Even if it's not something that he is in his wheelhouse to really do. Um, and so, I, I felt the need to call this meeting, um, for several reasons. But the, the first main reason is I think that we need to consider creating a new full-time position at city hall. That would be an administration position. This person would, um, help take some of the administrative executive work in terms of project management and getting things done. Things like the website, um, things like making sure that when it comes time to hire, you know, people for public works, that, that that's an expedited process that's happening, um, you know, on a, on a timetable that all of us would, would find agreeable to. That whenever it's time to, uh, edit the website, that this is not something that takes months to do at a time or, uh, or years to do at a time. Or, um, you know, some of the other things we talked about, budgets, public works, all these things that, the, the timetable just does not match up with what we need to see for a city of this size. Um, and so that's, that's my first suggestion is I think that we need to discuss the possibility of creating a new full-time position. This person would help Randy, they would help Kim, they would be somebody who could, um, you know, head up joint projects between the clerk and treasurer's office and the mayor's office. Or things that we are assigned, you know, asking to be administrated out through the city. Um, when we look at this organizational charge that the mayor made, we obviously don't have a public works director. And so we have not heard, you know, from a public works director, um, since I've been working here. I got to briefly meet Jeff, who seems like a really nice guy, but does not want to be involved in the political process at all. Um, and you could say whatever you want to about that, but I kind of understand that. What we need is a full-time person in that position. And over here on the office manager, what we have right now, Randy, it, it, it helped me explain this. Essentially, our court clerk acts as our office manager.
She does both jobs.
She does both jobs, right. And so, I don't know if this administrative position would go kind of in that spot where the office manager would be or up here above the department heads. But as an intermediary that would help coordinate projects across the different departments. Um, obviously especially focusing on public works and completing the public works staffing. Um, and HR, it's a huge critical function in the city that we do have some, some components of what would be in an HR department. Where it seems like delegated out to Kim in like twenty eighteen or so. But there are also really critical parts of the human resources department that we just do not have for a city of forty employees. Uh, right now, if you're editing, if somebody has a problem with Randy, their only options to go talk to Kim about it or talk to Randy about it. And that is a huge, huge gated hole for a city that was formed with forty employees. And I know that everybody else has different thoughts about potentially great sign that the mayor's brought up, having an assistant before. I think that this is, is more on the nose for, for what we would need. But now I'm just opening it up, I'd like to hear everybody else's thoughts on this sort of position could look like.
Um, I like that, the HR aspect, because there's only so much, like you can do as being the treasurer and the payroll clerk and everything you do. But when you're talking about public works, you know, filling that gap, then I don't think it should go up in, with Kim and the mayor and council. Um, I think, I think that's like a different, different thing or a different, you know, we need a public works director. We can't go, I want an admin position to fill public works because admin isn't known. If they're a true admin person, a true admin slash HR slash just city government in general, they're not gonna know the key components of, of public works.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I, I.
I guess I was trying to figure out where you were going.
Yeah.
Like, where are you looking at them here? Are you looking up here? Like a true like HR department that would take care of stuff like the website, the, the, um, you know, to know what our books say inside and out as an extra person in the office that can help the mayor. And it can help Kim on occasion if her clerk is out doing stuff with the police department and the fire department. Cause she, she has a number of house leases too. I guess where are you looking at like putting them on that or are you looking at kind of making a different kind of chart?
Um, yeah, so a couple of different answers. So I definitely am not trying to replace the public works director. I think hiring.
I guess I was confused about what you were, you're like, fill the public works gaps. But if they are not true public works, I don't feel like they're gonna be able to adequately.
So the cleanest place to put it would basically just be where it says department heads. Even though it says department heads right here would be to put this new administration, so administrator. So what I was saying.
Okay, that makes sense to me. That, that makes sense to me. Cause I was like, I don't think they should go up here with elected officials. Because they are elected, you know what I mean, elected officials. I don't feel like that should happen. But under like department heads, which would make sense because they should be able to communicate with all departments about various things.
Yeah, theoretically if a fireman has an HR issue, they should be able to go to this person, just like if a police officer does or a member of public works or one of the people in the city hall. Um, and when I was talking about a little more specific there, sorry about that, we have really had a problem staffing and keeping it staffed. And I'm thinking that this would help address that, uh, both on the back end in terms of people having better job satisfaction when they're actually here and feeling, you know, like their workplace is more complete and responsive to them. But also, uh, on the front end in terms of finding and hiring people, uh, that has been a very slow process for us right now. And it's essentially because Randy has to kind of do that by himself a lot of times. And so, um, to me, it's, 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 you could be right or even the mayor, you can think of it as, as, you know, an assistant. But I don't think of it as an assistant so much. I think it is just kind of a, a chief administration official or something.
Yes, like a chief of staff, kind of seating manager.
Yeah.
You know, personally, but I like the idea of helping with the HR side and kind of filling in too, the gaps. So if, you know, somebody who can, who's flexible, right?
You know.
But, but also has that kind of authority figure, um, persona about, I'm sorry.
You know, what I wanna say is probably not certainly very good with everybody here. I don't, I agree with that. I think I promised last meeting because I gave everything we had, all the time I've given into giving. Many meetings before we discussed having emergency meeting over the, you know, the thing that's really emergency for cities. Water department, project not getting done, we didn't wanna have it. Now having this meeting for a special call to dealing with this issue, I, okay, I came to the meeting. However, my big thing is I wanna know what's the justification for it, what's the purpose of it? How are we, how, how are we going to discard that job description? I just don't wanna add another layer of adding another person just to having to solve the problem. We have to own money and stuff that we needed to, I just don't think the issue is adding another layer. Now, I agree with the short, city of our size is like P age, right? P age, we're going into gentry, tons like that. Uh, we don't have all those layers. We don't, they don't have it. And they have as much employee as we have. We just have to know what the real issue is and resolve that issue. Rather than beating around the bush with adding another layer. That's just my opinion. I need, I need to have going forward, I don't care if it's whoever area it is, I wanna see justification for that position that we're gonna open. Just like any businesses that they do. We had money, we glad, I'm glad they had money that we were able to put money down right now for the, you know, when we're getting these men, we're getting all that stuff. If we didn't have money, we couldn't spend that money. We had the money and we need to be good steward of that money. And make sure we keep in that money. We keep adding position, adding position. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, I wanna ask you, do we need another position?
I, some of what's being discussed, public works position, hiring the department head is by statute my responsibility. That's something that having another layer to help with the public works really doesn't do. Um, the department heads, like the, uh, police department, fire department, we've got good leaders. We've got, I wanna build that department the same way so that the department head is working on budgets, is doing. And we are interviewing a different type of people now and we're approaching a different type. I started the advertising Friday and, uh, I, we need technicians as well, but that person would be hiring his own in the future. Right now, we're doing it all. I did get word Friday, we're not gonna be able to outsource or slow in the full hiring. So there's, you know, in that regard, I don't see, I see the public works director as being the, the, taking a huge part of the load and running their department will solve a lot of the part on my part of it. Uh, I feel like that I get that one position staffed with someone quality and, uh, professional. Then there's a huge part of the, uh, load taken right off of my shoulders. And at that point, I think things are much better. Uh, do I think there's still some needs with like website? Yes, I do. I'm working with the, uh, website company to help with some of that. Uh, don't know how that will go yet, but it's, they do training, they do, uh, they are looking into the actual services that they can provide above and beyond. They should have an answer before the week's out on that. So there's that part of it may take care of itself or we may need to hire someone. But again, like you said, that's not a real expensive deal to hire someone to be a website, uh, manager. It's a lot more expensive when you get into website design and all of that. But they can, even if you've got an existing website, it's not that expensive to have them updated. So in those regards, those are a couple of things that I feel like, uh, getting the position filled with a good quality person in the department head for public works will solve a lot.
Is Jeff, I know we got a contract with him part-time or whatever, see the department head of the public works?
He is at the moment.
Yeah, he's at the moment, okay. So.
By contract.
How long has it been since we hired Jeff?
Uh, we contracted with them, I think almost two years ago.
Two years ago.
I'm not sure exactly.
All I've noticed, I've been on almost two years. All I've noticed Jeff, so as the, as never, is not the head necessarily, but he's never gone away.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
He was in the process of going away when, when we hired him.
Which we had two.
Yeah.
One, I don't think, one of them.
One.
The one before that.
Yeah.
He, Jeff wasn't fully gone. He came on board, correct?
Right. He was here and we.
I don't, yeah, I don't remember, you're not ever talking about.
In, in either case, he's gonna stay long enough for someone to get their license transferred to us and be qualified then legally, uh, uh, compliant with the health department guidelines. So anyone that comes in, first ninety days, Jeff is staying. And probably a little bit longer while all of that transitions made within the health department licensing.
I think that would be great to have him do that for sure because we do not.
So how long has it been since the guy that had the medical issue left?
I don't know exactly.
We hired one between the Florida guy.
Yes.
Sorry?
We hired one between that, the gentleman from Florida that was trying to get his license transferred.
We hired another guy.
Before that guy.
Yes.
Before that.
Yeah, he's been gone for one over here.
Probably.
So, how long's that been?
Probably a little more than a year.
So why haven't we not, why are we just not advertising when it's been a year?
I've been very clear in what we've been doing. We tried to take a different route. We tried to do this through a contractor and the contractors don't want to do it unless they own the system.
That one a year ago, that's just been the last couple of months?
No, it's been going on now for about four or five months. We were going through that process and I make you all aware of it, it started last year.
Right, so I, I don't remember outsourcing a year ago.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Sure. It's two things. Um, I think you hear everything you're saying. Any job that we create, there should be a full justification from the city for why we're trading that job. But there are a couple of things, again, I've only been in city government for six months. I've been a resident of the city almost my entire life, right? And we can talk about, the crisis is, is water and sewer and I agree with you, you know I agree with you. So you know this has been my primary focus, but right now, it's like we're trying to shovel sand with a coner. It's full of holes. We are talking about how many different public directors we've gone through in just the past couple of years. Something's not working right. And we can say, ah, we just need to snap our fingers and it needs to work better, mayor do it. Can you, I mean, that doesn't do anything. We have to have somebody competent that we can hold accountable. That is, that is not, uh, an elected official, that is an employee of the city, that can remain steady through administrations. That can set normal standard operating procedures for the city. This is just how an organization runs and we can say, oh, there's maybe some magic solution out there. And Randy, I, I don't want you to think I'm coming down here, but I'm just gonna be honest about the way I see it. In my private business, if there was something as critical as water and sewer, that force, you know, I said, well, I can't hire somebody for it, so I gotta outs- outsource somebody. Outsourcing something, I mean, those, that, those calls should all happen on the same day. I mean, it's, it's, there's a, an aggression that I just don't see on some of these things. And I think it's because you have too many things on your plate. You have too much, or maybe.
There's a policy, there's a process in government that you have to put it out for bids. And it requires a certain length of time that it be out for bids before you can close the bid process. If you don't get any bids during that process, which we did, and then I found out we had two companies that were interested. But they were not prepared for it. And so they thought they had lost it because they, neither one were prepared in time. Which maybe that we gave them too short a window for that big of a, uh, process or that big of a, uh, project. So we extended the time, we worked with both of them and we did get, uh, one of them came back about two weeks later and said that, uh, after reviewing everything without owning the system, they weren't interested. And the other one, it took them about four more weeks to get there. But the last thing I wanted to do was hire a bunch of people that we were going to start training to lay them off because someone said, yes, we're gonna do this by contract. So as soon as I got the notice, there was the urgency and I immediately posted.
So, okay, so you're talking about the contract, sorry, I was, I was, wait a second, what, you were talking about the website or the contract with the outsourcing?
Outsourcing public works.
Okay, um, I need to see where JJ's coming from and I also kind of very much appreciate what MC said. Am I pleased to getting, um, someone kind of right there that goes over the department head? No, I'm not opposed to it, but however, maybe a better answer would be, let's get our public works under wrap. So they're not taking, sorry, I'm gonna tell you this, cause I can't speak, I'm sure. Um, why don't we get our public works under wrap and then have somebody stable there and then look at that. So then, so they're not feeling they got the public works where realistically they shouldn't be competent at anyway. If you're looking at the job description as a whole kind of understanding.
I'll, I'll make a point again, we are hemorrhaging people in this position and in this department. Because we do not have, in my opinion at least, I, at first I was really pushing it's pay. Several people told me right out of pay, that pay was really not the biggest issue. I went and I talked to the employees, current and former, and I, and I heard from some employees through other people, former employees. They were not satisfied with their, the work situation and they did not feel that they had adequate channels to talk to. And they had a good life to talk to, may have grievances, you know, that, just classic HR problems. And so absolutely, let's go full speed ahead on the public works director. This is not an either or orbit and it's nothing about this needs to detract from the search for a public works director. Which should be our highest priority. But if we hire a health and work director and we don't fix the, the way that human capital is being preserved and utilized at city hall and throughout city government, we're just gonna lose the next public work director.
Jimmy, things, how many one person that can go to for HR?
HR would be the biggest component of the job. There are other things like IT and the website, things like that that.
Which kind of falls under HR anyway.
Absolutely. And, and Mary, now let's just be clear, I don't want this person, I, I, I'm not suggesting, uh, and, and obviously can't be suggesting that we take away your statutory need to hire. But this is somebody who can post on a need for you, right? I mean, that takes time out of your day. These are, there are.
Screaming candidates.
Yeah, screaming candidates.
Which is typical HR.
Yes, yes.
Typical HR department stuff, okay. I can see your, your argument there, yes. To rely on the air to post every single position open, which is way more than I currently want, as any of us do. That, I think that makes sense as one go-to person, if a kid and mayor are at. Look, there's been, there's a one, one person that isn't what we, but if you are looking at, if we are looking at hiring that one person, the job description, uh, needs to be either straight, like, and also, they need experience in HR government to understand, Kim is elected and she does X, Y, Z. The mayor is elected and he does this, the council, if they have, if someone to call, I'll be campaign HR. Who should be your best source to go to this? Well, you're looking at, looking at the budget stuff, that is very much your right ear, resident. I'm gonna direct you to Kim. Or this is this, I'm gonna direct you to the mayor. Oh, you need a list of all the council members. Here you go, I think the council is the best fit, here's your list.
So, I wanted to say something about that. I'm not against HR person, having a HR person. But what, what I am against in fact that this HR person, we're adding another layer right now. Or I think we need to go full force or toward getting somebody for public water, but take care of street and water department. That should be our emergency issue that we gotta deal with. By the time we get a person, find the person, that's gonna be HR. It's gonna, let's, I don't mind talking about this, but I think we're putting cart before the horse in this sense. And I, I don't, you know, I've been in a lot of organizations, HR is important, but we have cities with our size that doesn't have HR and it's operating. We need to, I promise you, every one of you guys here. A year from now, if we don't issue that, resolve the issue that exists. Even if you put a HR person, you're gonna have another layer, they're gonna, you're gonna have more issues on your hand because people go to the HR that. And then they got a mushroom on their hands. I'm telling you, we need to deal with the issue that exists. We need to have teamwork in the city, we need to make sure people are feeling good about their job.
What is the issue that exists? It's not just the waters that we.
I mean, you need to have some more.
We got, we got issues with, I think we talked about hiring, um, personnel issues. I mean, I definitely, I don't, I don't think it needs to be, I don't look at it as an earlier MC. I look at it as augmenting the layer we've got, just adding like, one of the kind of director level person. But we're getting big enough where having an HR specialist kind of person might make sense. I mean, I don't know if we're quite there yet, but we're getting there fast.
I, I think we're just not dealing with the issue that exists. I don't think it's always the, necessarily the issue. I think the issue that exists is what's, why is people are quitting? I mean, you, you talked to some, I've talked to some. And the, the fact is that there are ways to do this position that we are dealing with them. I mean, why not having a committee that helps the mayor with that position, looking at application, having it so perhaps some accountability in this. Many cities don't go off, is that, it, I mean, we have, we used to do that all the time. We had a committee that looked at the position, you hire it, that at the end of the day would be your, that it would be somebody else saying, okay, today we're gonna meet, we said, we posted two weeks ago, how many applicants we got, we go through them. It just helped him to get the stuff done, like, we told, I mean, we haven't done a lot of things that we could do, we haven't done. But I don't, I mean, I'm just one wood, I just don't, I don't wanna add another layer on this, we deal with the issue that exists. Uh, but in my opinion, it's a teamwork leadership inside, inside the city.
It's supposed to be important teamwork leadership, that's all in charge and that's just, it's not adding a layer.
It's not, I'm sorry, I think, it's not adding a layer, it's filling in holes.
It's just the wrong metaphor. It's not, it's not adding a layer, the appropriate course is filling in holes. And you're saying we're putting the cart before the horse, the cart is in front of the horse. The horse is pushing the cart ever since I've been in the city government. We can't hire them, we can't keep them.
Yes, it's proved positive.
Cause I.
I know. My thing is, MC, I don't know exactly what the committee is, but I would rather hire the one than involve a whole bunch of people in a committee. That scares me because. But still, you're having volunteers weeding out what an HR person might be able to hold in on if they have experience in government. I would rather not have a committee and have an HR because I think that's too many hands in the thing that, that are volunteers. Quite wonderful, are they, are they volunteers just to volunteer? You know, or are they, are they competent at what, what job they're hiring based upon what other cities are hiring and other job descriptions? So I would rather have one person helping weed out applicants than a volunteer committee, in my.
And I said, well, I tell you, we, we need that, so I'm sitting against all the helps that, that has happened before, but.
Okay, I mean, that makes sense because, I mean, that makes more sense.
Like I said, I'm just one wood, I think, I really need that vinegar, Mr. Mayor, I remember when the Jeff came. When we were hiring Jeff temporarily to help, at that time I was fighting really hard and I said, I don't want it to be more than one month, more than two months. It went on and on and on and it continues that. Now what caused that? I don't know. I don't, I'm just saying, I don't know. But I promise you, if you think HR is, brings teamwork and leadership, no, HR brings a lot of accountability, I accept that. And could put program, educate people, that, that kind of stuff. But as far as the, in, the fact that those leadership doesn't come from HR, I promise you, that's just my opinion. I don't feel like you can have a biggest HR company, but if you don't have people in leadership that are taking care of what they're supposed to do, it's not gonna, they're not the issues that's gonna exist, that's why there's so many lawsuit going on.
I've been asking for three months, maybe longer, why we can't keep people. Mayor proved it last week, that pay chart, it's not the money, it's not the money. There's something else going on. You talk to people, current employees, past employees, what did they say the problem was? Why did they quit? You talk to people, current employees, past employees, what did they say the problem was? Why did they quit?
A lot of them had problems either with leadership in City Hall, or, you know, the, the personality conflicts, things like that. The ones who left on the board and who weren't let go by the city, that, that was a comment that I was hearing. And this is, and the thing is, I mean, I, I agree with you, Gypsy, I don't think that, you know, hiring an HR person is this magic thing that they're gonna come in and just sprinkle leadership on everybody, but teamwork and a good working environment, accountability and stability are unnecessarily requisite for them, in a work environment. You cannot have a great team dynamic in an unstable place where you feel like you don't have any of yours.
I do understand that, I'm not disagreeing with that, I just don't think, I think there is other, underlying issue that exists, that, uh, we're not dealing with, we're disappointing people, I think. Hoping that people have a heart, somebody else will resolve it, I think. That's just my opinion, after talking to so many people, I have the same opinion, but that's just.
Kim, do you do HR?
Yes, sir.
Do you do HR stuff too?
Uh, just in the hiring and firing part of it, and, but everything I take goes through.
Who does the posting?
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't.
What'd you say again?
No, it doesn't.
What doesn't?
He said everything that he does, go through HR goes through me, no, it doesn't.
I post for jobs, but.
When, when he hires someone, that's totally on him. I don't, as HR, I don't call, I don't do references, I don't check anything.
Right.
Uh, I'll call and schedule a drug screening, or, and I'll call and schedule a background check. But that's only thing that HR is involved with.
And then you do all the paperwork for the intake.
That's, I get him signed hooked up as a new employee.
Okay.
But what the council needs to understand is, there are so many layers when you say, we need to hire HR, we need to hire HR. You probably need to talk to our HR department to figure out what those job duties are before you start trying to outsource that. Because there's so many layers, and what I mean by that is, yes, it starts with the employees of hiring with the mayor, it starts there. Then after he hires and finds out who he wants, then I get the new paperwork, then I, you know, get them set up for their benefits. Then we make sure that they're law fee, or they're APers, or all this other retirement is set up, that's the financial side. Then if, um, they wanna change anything on their taxes, of course, that's also a change in, in the employee side. Um, they don't wanna change anything on their medical benefits, that's also an HR side. These are all parts of the HR that is financial part, that if you were to give up HR, also know that this is a financial part that, that the HR person really, you're looking for someone that's gonna kind of be a, uh, a comment box, oh, you got problems, well, come talk to me. Great, okay, that's, but you can't give out all the financial part to an HR person.
Is, is that the normal function of the city government?
Correct.
It is?
Yes, it is. Now, your larger cities like North Little Rock, for an example, they may have their own finance, finance office, then they may have their own HR office, but we're talking hundreds upon hundreds of employees, not a small town, forty, I think we have maybe thirty full-time employees, maybe.
So if somebody has a problem, then, do they come to you?
They go to their department head first.
Also?
They go to their department head first.
We don't have our.
Well, they'll go to the fire department department head, or they'll list this department.
We have no problems with them, we're looking at public works.
The mayor is ultimately your public works department head, ultimately.
At this point in time, and yet, there have been a few that didn't come to me. I was never found out what was going on until they left, I got one of them that quit while I was out of town.
Now, if they'll come to me without going to their department heads, I stop them right there. I say, have you spoke to your department heads? Because there's a chain of command that you need to go through first and foremost, to try to get your department head to handle the situation before you come to me. If you, if you don't get that resolved through your department head, then I'll be glad to sit down and listen to you, and then we'll, we'll discuss it and see where we need to go from there.
In this go around, there's a couple of things I'm doing different, because, like, I agree, you don't do the same thing over and over again, hoping for something different. Uh, David hired an assistant, did a very good job of it, had a bunch of people interviewed. And when he went through that process, he utilized Grace, who has been in city government in one form or another for a lot of years, as the second person in the, uh, interview process. And so there were a couple of stages to that process, and it, and then they discussed what they both got out of it and what they thought of the particular candidates. And they kind of grew that from there for their final three or four that came back for a final interview. I'm planning to change process up to where I do something a little more like that, because in the past, I've interviewed them once and made my decision, well, getting a second opinion and going through a two-step process may help build additional quality and help us avoid some of the mistakes that I'm committed to doing this time that I hadn't done before. Uh, the other thing is, um, you know, with this process, I'm advertising in a couple of different areas, this time we're doing Indeed. And in addition to that, we, uh, did go through the trade organization through, uh, Earl Water, because the last time we did that was the only time we've got people that actually had certifications that could take the job. And so we're going to be utilizing both sources, not, uh, not just, okay, we're doing Indeed, now we get a bunch of people that are, are bodies, we wanna be sure, and maybe we get some that are qualified from there. But we wanna be sure that we're going to the trade location as well, to maybe get that guy that's been twelve years as an assistant, uh, director with the city that's so big, and the guy above him is, he's not gonna get his step up, well, maybe his step up is here. He's got the experience, he's got the knowledge and certification, but he's, now's his opportunity to move up. We're gonna approach that way as well as just certified people that have experience as a director, because we get, we did that, and we got two that didn't work out. And, uh, so, we're trying different approaches to try to get someone here that's qualified, that's a professional, that will run the department, that will run it, or do the budgeting, that can get on the different equipment, get on the different technology, and be comfortable with it. And those are all things that are important.
I, what am I gonna do? I was just gonna say that, that two-step process, we, that's a given, this should be, at least two people looking at, this should be, what gets him into you?
Right, we're working.
At least call their, at least call their previous employers.
Yes, well, why, I've called previous employers, but you don't always get, they would, the people they list are usually not the people you really need to talk to.
I don't agree with that.
Well, previous employers cannot give out information about.
But you can also get their work history from a previous employer, how long they actually truly worked there.
That is correct.
Do they have the, do they have the history to work equipment, like they say they do? You know, they can tell you that. Um, you know, we have a guy that says, like, yeah, yeah, I can operate heavy equipment, yeah, I can operate a Mini-X. You get them out there and they can hardly operate a shuttle. So, but if they're telling you that in a job interview, and they don't have the history and the knowledge that they're supposed to, but that's what they're telling you, that's what we go off of, if you have a lot of job references.
Here, here's all I'm gonna say. And, and, like, like you said, I'm just one vote. Uh, and, and I'm gonna be mad at you for giving up there Tuesday night. I brought this up because there are limited solutions to what I see as some of the major problems in our city government that the city council can directly, uh, address with an ordinance or with a resolution, right? There, there, there are not a lot of ways for us, uh, to try to help our constituents in a situation where, if my constituents are saying, you know, why is this leak in the bottom of Brown Road leaking for six months, eight months, you know, why is this happening? It's, it's, you know, maybe you'd say, oh, we don't have a public works director. And it's like, that's, well, that's a duh answer, but then it's like, well, why don't we have a public works director? Why, you know, there, there are all these other things that, all I'm gonna say is, the speed seems off to me, and, and Mayor Nala, I'm not doubting you in terms of doing things the correct way, in terms of how it has been done in city government, all I'm telling you is, the speed is off. The speed is off across the board to me, and when I see things going slowly as they are, and I'm having to answer too many questions, I am, not just from constituents, but from staff members, uh, in City Hall and all around the city, something's gotta be done. And, 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 you know, I, if, if it's not creating this position, the next thing we're gonna talk about is, is putting a committee together, but if it's not creating this position, then one of the first things that this committee needs to be doing is researching, what is making our government run so slowly? Why is it so efficient? And a lot of it was, why are we leveraging employees? You know, when we lose employees, we should have people doing exit interviews with them, you know? And Mayor Nala, I think you're a really nice guy, but if you were my boss, direct boss, I might be more scared to talk to you about certain of these things, you know what I mean? It just, it creates, it creates an intense situation, and, again, you're not really, you're not allowed to say anything bad about them on the phone, but they don't wanna say, oh, Mayor Nala, I'm leaving 'cause I hate your mustache, or whatever it is, that people are upset. And, you know, want to hold that against, so I think that, I, I think that there is a gap in, in City Hall, I think there is a hole, as I would call it. I think that this would help everything underneath it. Uh, and, and the truth is, yes, we have a really great, uh, police chief, we have a great fire chief, I appreciate you guys' service so much, and you guys keep your departments together. We, this, this public works director has a, you know, the office is supposed to be right here in City Hall, they're working in City Hall, and they're not out there doing actual public works, um, you know, projects. And I just think, you know, if we're hearing things that City Hall, uh, you know, people would, would prefer somebody to talk to, that's, and again, I get it, so, so much of what the actual HR person does, like, really actually, it's what I would call the core fundamentals of HR, you are actually doing, except for hiring and firing, training, so. Um, but I think that it, it just is that core concept of, you know, if somebody has a problem, you know, they have somebody to go talk to, uh, and somebody outside of just, if, you know, what if they're, what if they hate Gary and they hate Randy, you know, then who do they have to go talk to? You know, or, or what if they think that, that, you know, Rick and Randy are colluding, they're doing something, who do they have to go talk to in that situation? You know, I get the city attorney, they just call the city attorney, I just, I think there's a little bit, I think there's a gap there, and I think that it's not just HR, it's, it's, and this is why I'm calling this position an administration position, HR is a part of it, some parts of HR that, that Kim and Randy cannot do because they're trying to run their departments full-time, and they are elected, and, you know, just, again, kinda, I guess the comment box, I kinda like that frankly, that is sort of what it is.
I mean, 'cause you can't really pull the financial side from the HR.
Yes.
You would be do, you'd basically be hiring, you'd be hiring that person to do the hiring and firing and deal with employee concerns.
Yes.
And also, I mean, like.
Not the full HR position in, in, as a whole.
But, but anything that, anything that they were allowed to help you with, you could delegate to them, and that does take some, you know what I mean? That takes some paperwork off your desk potentially.
Lisa does a great job, and I think if you get too many irons in the fire, you're just, it's too, too many. And, and I, I really truly appreciate Lisa, and as I know Gary and Rick does as well, and I wouldn't trade her for nothing. And, um, so, our, our department is fine. I mean, I'm not asking for any extra help in our department. Our department is fine, I would rather not hire anybody extra for our side. Now, if the council wants to hire someone for the employee side, to deal with employee concerns and deal with employee issues, and deal with the hiring and the firing, great, if that's what you guys wanna do, kudos. But for the financial side of the HR, we're rocking in on our department, and we're fine.
I wouldn't want that taken away from you, because you're the subject funder expert, clearly my definition, but like, um, for example, like, I take military vacation, you know, I turn it in, who takes vacation?
And did you know the state laws changed when it comes to your fire department and your police department, when you have somebody in the military? They get more vacation time now.
They should, they get military, yes, and, and official.
Those are things that, you know, your, your HR person needs to make sure that they keep up with all of that.
That's why I said, if we hire somebody, they need to be experienced, who does vacation right now, or lead, or whatever you call it? Who does the, turns the party?
We do, I do.
Is it because of the financial side?
Correct.
It's benefit, yeah.
It's a benefit.
She does payroll.
Cause she has payroll, right?
We do all the payroll?
And Lisa, if, like, works in your department?
Correct. I get her fifty percent of the time, and they get her twenty-five of each of them. So she does, she does all of their payroll to make sure that they're, it's almost a full-time job keeping them in line, but, but, um, it's, it's a race, every, every Friday, it's every other Friday, she turns in their time faster, the police and the fire, so.
Part of, part of the, and this is what I keep going back to, if you have a public works director, that is who they'll answer to instead of the mayor. And the public works, after they get to know me a little bit, some of them come on in, they visit, they talk, they talk about concerns or issues or whatever, and we iron them out. When they, I don't know if it's just from title, that some people are a little eerie to walk into the mayor's office. Uh, I try to keep my door open a substantial amount of times, so they can see that I'm available and that, and, but, I do think that a lot of the problem goes away when we get a professional public works director.
Is there, is there tension in the office, in the City Hall, between employees?
A few. And that's not a, a lateral type of tension, and that's really all I'm.
I understand. I, I, I'm just trying to. I've had a chance to talk to some of the previous, while they were still employees, just a couple. I can't think of the, the black guy's name that left, what's his name?
Brandon.
Yeah, Brandon, yeah.
Why do you think you? I don't know.
Oh, that's what you're saying, too, is anybody?
I don't know. But that, you know, there's, there was tension. Not only with him and the other coworkers, but there was tension somewhere else waiting on him.
But you don't know, but you kinda know, I mean, you, you have a sense of it. See, I, I have no idea, I met him, he did work in my neighborhood, and I got to talk to him, and he was with another agribole, um, and I just wondered, you know, they seemed like they liked, they enjoyed the job. I remember running into Brandon in City Hall, and I said, yeah, thanks for, you know, helping us out, you know, he came through and fixed the stuff in our neighborhood. And, you know, he seemed like, he seemed like he was really eager to please and happy that he had a good job in the city, and proud of what he was doing, and enjoyed that, I recognize him, but, you know, I just, that's like, kind of like case study, but I, I'd love to understand what was in his head. Did he get another job with another city for more money?
No.
That gets back to the money thing, um, combination of things.
He actually went to go drive a duck truck.
Do I?
He went to drive a duck truck.
Oh, okay. Or money?
I just think.
I talked to Brandon a lot, and, and, uh, yeah, it, it was, he felt it was a better move for him financially, family.
Then we're getting.
So, well, but I mean, it.
That's a good reason.
No, money, money's a room, I mean, I don't know, truly, truly is, but I don't, I don't think anything really drove him away. I, I know there was some issues.
He got, he got an opportunity.
Yeah, he had a good time, he looked better himself, but he felt.
Good for him, well, he'd be, he'd be happy to hear that.
I don't, I just think that there's something else going on. I don't, I don't know what it is.
I think the council needs to go to an executive session if you wanna really truly know what's going on inside of City Hall, because it can't, it can't.
Was it tired or fired?
Well, you can't really discuss it in open forum. I don't think you can truly discuss it in an open forum.
We can, but, can, on Tuesday, when you call a special session, executive session?
Not for that, no.
Hiring, firing.
I am confused.
Hiring, firing.
I tried that.
Yeah, that's, Justin told me it really is, it's all, it has to be hired, because if I hire someone.
You wanna know?
I really see, it truly is about hiring and firing, honestly. I really see MC's point, and I see JJ's point, and if there's tension already, I don't think bringing in another person at this time is going to, is going to magically, like you said, and you openly said that too, so I, I understand where you're coming from. But I'm just worried, but I agree, the speed is off. The speed is off.
The speed is off, you know, but, I must say something regarding that somebody going to, maybe afraid to going to, but, you know. Maybe afraid to go into, you know, Mr. Mayor's office or whatever. The point is, we don't wanna wait until they come to our office. The point is, we wanna get to them. We gotta get to know every employee that works at there, regardless, we discussed it. And one-on-one with every employee, knowing what's going on in that city, because if we wait for them to come in. A lot of people don't go to their bosses, really honestly, they don't. But once we get, we gotta change our mindset rather than waiting for them. We need to be proactive in being with, with the employee, getting in touch with them, knowing that, I forget the gentleman that left. You know, I had a discussion with him. Unfortunately, he wasn't worth money, I'll be honest with you.
Who'd you have a special?
Oh, the gentleman, I forget the gentleman that was.
Oh.
I don't know what his name, I forgot, it's not for real. But honestly, that, that was the only problem there, but that was, but. I think if we proactive, we point to them as a leader. This man and whoever the department head is, we understand what their needs is, what, we gotta understand what's going on with them before. We wait for them to go to HR or somebody else, they haven't got that. Those two departments are running, the department head probably knows everybody, talks to them every day, every day. And I agree with you that if you have somebody else here for. Hire somebody as a department head who wasn't a city department, then you won't operate with somebody that's not this guy. We won't have, as a lot of issues will go away, but then there are some other issues that honestly. I wanna be frank with you, Mr. Mayor, that you need to understand what's going on in City Hall more often than you have me. Speed things, like we just said, I really think. You have more time if delegate to other people's terms of responsibility and then follow up until you will have more time. I really think for City Hall size. Again, I'm, I look at, I went today, look at Peter, you look at Jen, look at Santa, look at Rob. Towns with other to see how many employees they have, what they do. You, you can throw HR person on it, it's gonna function way that people are gonna go in it. Complain, open a case, but we got open cases, open cases is gonna go on, whereas. If we be proactive and be having a good working, what event created in there, we won't have that issue. That's just my take on it.
Whereas I hired all, with IRS. Every manager I had. I can't say it all, we worked together. But they knew me, they knew Susan's name, they knew my kid's name, they knew, they knew about it. Because you had that relationship. That's part of being a person. In control. They were group manager. I was not their only employee. They had fifteen, twenty employees. And, but I'm assuming they knew that about all of them. Because they did with me. They took the time to get to know me. And that may be something that's missing. I, I don't know. I, I don't know it. I don't know. But we're not keeping them. And it's not, so there's something else going on. And you've got to find out what it is.
You know, I don't want to hire a young, young, but what I'm saying that really, that's not gonna resolve the issue. What I think, Mr. Mayor, I agree to some extent, what I said to you, I agree with, I mean, that's what I said. So he, that's why he's changing his way in some ways, that's. Uh, but I think we gotta really, I really like two weeks last city council meeting that I said, the one before that I said, we need to have a emergency meeting for that reason. Because we're gonna have a lot of action, and we're gonna have those action items that we're gonna plan for, and we're gonna implement it. That's what I was worried because we went to another, we're going, we went to another meeting now, we appear again, still haven't got. I really like to get something together, I mean, if you guys wanna hire, I mean, go and both, hire someone, but let's really. Let's put it to committee or something, what city council member, man, they have two wives, we're married, somebody from City Hall or even police, they'll be with that. Let's have some people look at it, let's get, have some accountability there, we're gonna post it, we're gonna interview them, we're gonna check, check their. Previous, previous work history and numerous other things that goes through the interview that we all know.
Your, your recommendation would be a committee over a hire?
At this point, because by the time you hire, I mean, even if you are, we're gonna have this, you gotta resolve this issue right now, we can't wait until you hire HR. But that HR person has to understand the government, has to understand partners, it's gonna take time, we don't wanna wait to hire. At HR, then, all right, if this, whatever regards or whatever we do, I really think that. We gotta put a committee together that helps Mr. Mayor to get this position filled. That's my.
I would agree on a committee to help get that position filled over.
Well.
But I, I guess.
The HR is part of the clerk's work. I don't know what. I don't have the job description in front of me, I don't know.
Could you write up the job description or are you thinking of changing it?
Oh, I mean, yes, sure, I could, I, I think it would.
I guess, I guess I'm just, it's still so vague, cause like the kids talks about her.
Being city clerk, it's city clerk and treasurer's.
So she's a clerk, which clerk to me in this, I was an HR clerk in the military. She has the clerk part to her, her name, so when she just talked about it, and she did, I'm seeing the gaps and I agree with this, speed is off. I just don't know.
If.
I think throwing a committee at it first would be a better. My personal opinion, approach, considering if you had, like, you recommended MC. Member on council, but everybody, you know, if a member has time to be on there, I don't know. I cannot convince enough, um, with my own stuff, I can't, I'm sorry. But, you know, a couple members of City Hall, the mayor, and, you know, maybe a passionate resident. Or one that's on the water and who are committed, you know, um. I guess, I guess maybe the main thing that's holding me up is the job description, because we've talked about so much. That if we're gonna hire somebody, the job description we're thinking of, which is, the mayor's trying to do a job description, but I guess to hone in on. Exactly what you're, what you're thinking, would this be a full-time, a part-time? Cause like, right now, looking at it, I think the best job would be a part-time, if I would really look at it, considering everything Kim listed. And, um.
Or take a look at everybody's job description inside of City Hall, and it may be an option to kind of re.
Align it.
Realign and look at everybody, what everybody's job descriptions, you know, sit down and talk to these employees and say, okay, what do you do? All day, I mean, what are you doing? And I know Tammy, she does building and I mean, she helps with Grace and Court, so. And I don't think Court is even on her job description, but I know she helps Grace with Court. So we need to sit down, sorry Tammy, I'm using you as an example just cause you're here. But sit down and talk to these employees and and say, okay, what do you do? And is there a gap in your position that maybe we could, you know, slide something else over? You know, we hired a little gal right now that, uh, full-time and she's begging for stuff to do. Because she doesn't have enough to keep her busy. So there again, we need to look at her job description.
Position is she in?
Planning.
Planning assistant and she is learning other jobs to fill, so we are giving her more to do. She helps, uh. She's learning the building side to help when.
I mean, I think she'd be a great floater. I mean, I hate to say, I hate to use that terminology, floater, cause it's, it's not.
It's different departments need different things at different times of the month and a year.
Like if Grace is out.
A generalist.
Yeah, if Grace is out, then she can come in and slide in and help Tammy do what, you know, and in that office. Uh, we just have to be really careful with what her pay is, I mean, because we can't pay her out of water and sewer if she's working on the general side and vice versa.
Is that legal to, could she cover?
She can cover.
She can cover, she can.
As long as water and sewer pays part of her salary.
Right, if she starts working in water and sewer, they gotta pay part of her salary.
And that's okay.
And she can help, uh, you know, the, we have talked about mine when it's not the hiring of these positions. Mine's, uh, should be fairly manageable, except for a couple of times a month that I really get, uh.
She can make all your packet copies.
And she can help with packets and the things like that. And then move right back into her duties.
We have a, if she's really, I guess, the main thing would be to see how much overtime she has. How much is she, is there certain times of the month where dating really eats her? Are there certain?
And there aren't, especially in working and preparing for meetings and preparing the minutes afterwards. And so, I mean, there are variables there where she can assist. And so, but she's learning the different areas to assist, so that she can fill those gaps. The, my only reluctance to the council committee deal is. I am trying to do that kind of visit committee with people in City Hall, but I've already posted. I'm wanting to move, I'm not wanting to have something where I've got a schedule with someone outside. That's not there all the time to try to get them in and, and schedule for the interviews, I'm not looking to. I am trying to do it differently and bring other people in and do additional steps of, uh. Basically follow up and.
And this is one accountability in it, that make sure that is that this lady said we're gonna post it tomorrow, it's gonna be posted tomorrow. And I have him be set up, we're gonna have him be set up, somebody to. Another lady always helps, I have somebody else, you know, in there to help us. I wanna use the website as a good example of that. I, I mean, honestly, in a City Hall, it could be somebody that can, could have been trained how to. Work with a website or work with a company that does the website to do it, rather than they just wait for you to do it, if that's what you've been doing. So the, a lot of things can be resolved if we delegate and follow up, no people in City Hall, follow up with them. Make sure we understand what their issue is, a lot of this issue don't get resolved, I think there is. Uh, like I said, I really, I'm not worried about the money that we're throwing at the person to put in there as much as. I'm worried about that we're not gonna resolve the issue, we just start to run another layer that's gonna create. Another bunch of complaint that's gonna come in and we still haven't got to the root cause of the problem. You need to get to the root cause of the problem and I think some of it, I'm glad to hear Mr. Mayor is. Admitting that some of it is his responsibility to, that is the one issue.
I don't like this nonsense enough, I apologize. Oh, are you like?
No, I disagree with you. We need to find out what the problem is.
Well, so here's what I'll say then. I, i- in terms of the discussion of the new position, let's table that till the next work session and come back to this. We've got somebody in City Hall that we may be able to rejigger how some of the job duties are, are being done. Let's utilize the human capital that we've got on staff right now. I can't keep track of my agreement, this agreement at this point, but the, the issue of the committee. To me, does seem like, in terms of the committee for hiring, that really does seem like a surplus extra layer that's just gonna take more time to get this position filled. I think we need to be trying to get the position filled as quickly as possible. Uh, Randy, I do think it would be a good thing to come to the meeting next week with an update on how that job starts going and what specific things have been done and. I, I think that would be a good thing, but as far as I'm concerned, that I think the, the conversation's getting a little bit circular at this point, I think we can table this. And the other thing is, we, we're talking about group house problems, tensions, all this other stuff. We can't go into an executive session right now, at least I don't think you can, and I would need Justin to like, tell me that, you know, uh, that we can do that. But that's just something for us to, I guess, marinate on. And everybody maybe personally, sit down tonight and look in the mirror and think, you know, what can I do to make City Government better? I don't know, but that, I mean, I think that's ridiculous.
Well, I, I, Kim and I have, have been at the city longer than anybody. Um, so we, we can talk about this today, that we have seen so many people come and go over the, the past eight, nine years. Um, in the different departments and, and you know, when, when I was given. The opportunity to, to head the police department, there were so many things wrong. And, and so. I had to prioritize the things and, and I use this term, but you've heard me say it before, there's necessities and niceties. And we need to take care of them necessities first and the niceties will come later. And, and so. I, I would like to talk to each one of y'all at some point and I can tell you what, what, what I think of the, the water department, um. Uh, I'll, I'll do it now, um. We, I think there's too many. People making decisions in the water department for the workers that we have. The, the mayor's given them tasks, Julie's given them tasks, Jeff's given them tasks, and I don't think they know who. Ultimately, the mayor's boss, period, if, if or but, that's my boss. And so, I, I think there's a lot of confusions of who, who do I answer to? Who's telling me to, to do what? And it's, and it causes friction, cause they don't wanna piss this person off and they don't wanna get this other person mad. And so, they're, they're trying to juggle and do everything and, and right now, the way the water department's sitting. Uh, we got nothing. We, we don't have, the, the head of the state is gone and the state behind is gone. Um, you, you gotta fix the head and everything else should fall in line, um. It, it took, it took several years to get the police department where I, I, I'm comfortable with it and, um. And, and I'm sure Gary, you know, Gary's thrown in with the same thing, you know, this. He's the beginning day of the first fire chief of a full-time fire department here.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, he's, he's learning as he goes, just like I did. And, and some things you can fix and some things you can't, and I can tell you that when, when I'm hiring somebody, I just hired a guy. Cause, uh, one, one of my guys resigned and, um, so I just hired him and I, and me and my lieutenant. Interviewed this guy. And we used to do a full board, we'd have like four or five officers on there. And then I was like, I don't get too many opinions, I, I don't want that many opinions. So it's just me and my lieutenant interviewed these people. And there's three things I look for. One, they know the job and they're good at the job. Two, they're a good fit for the department. And three, they're a good fit for the city. Um, that's what I look for, um, so. And, and it hasn't done me wrong yet. Well, no, it hasn't. But I, I think we gotta. There's just, like the budget, the mayor has done the water sewer budget every year since you've been mayor. The, 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 the department has never has. Now, he may have sat down with them and tweaked some numbers, but he ultimately did it all. Uh, mayor doesn't do any of my, either. Cause I don't expect him to know how many bullets I need, how many vests I need.
And how many cars I should be doing it for public works.
He doesn't know how much training we need. Uh, he, cause that's not his thing and I'm sure that's the same thing in the water. He knows enough about water to be dangerous, no fear.
No, it's true.
And, and I know much more about water and sewer than any police chief in this state knows, I guarantee. Because back in the day, it just like you were saying, it needs to be a, a family atmosphere and it was. We, I was out helping digging ditches, I was out there responding.
Even with all the drama we had, we still.
We, we stayed strong and staying with it, so. What, what I see in, in the water department, just you got, you got Jeff who's contracted in, is he really a city employee? Does he give the orders or we just use him for his license? I've heard the guys talk about that. You know, he doesn't even work for the city, how can he tell me what to do? Um, Julie, I, I don't even know what her title is.
She's a water clerk.
Water clerk, okay. Now, she's giving orders. The clerk, water clerk is giving the worker bees orders and they're like, this, this ain't right, you know, so. There, there's a lot of confusion.
Like, what? Work orders have always come through the clerk's office. When someone calls and says, I've got a pothole. They fill out a work order and they put it in their work, in their, uh, slide for things that they're to. Manage their territory and take care of the potholes. But that's always come out of that department. When we get to the fifteenth of the month. We have to do migraries, it's not the question, it has to be done, it has to be a priority, so we get report in and we get.
Mayor Nala, I wanna listen to all this, I don't think this has anything to do.
But it does and the, when I get calls in. I don't go in and call them and have them start doing things, I go to the ladies and have work order put in. To make this system work better. There are a few rare exceptions where something comes in, like today, they had to get the, um. Should've been an hour to take a porch off of the community building and then get back to their jobs. And they got the porch off the community building somewhere around noon, that shouldn't have happened.
Who did?
The public works.
Why are they working on something that we paid thirty thousand dollars?
We saved forty-seven thousand dollars tearing down the block building and removing the sidewalk, which that.
By our water department.
By our water department with our equipment.
We're, we're getting off topic here, let's.
But that was in the contract, that was approved a long time ago.
But is Jeff pri-, okay, so Jeff, in my eyes, you just said he's the public works, so I feel like maybe Jeff should prioritize the work orders.
Right.
And not have, I don't know, but this, one thing that she said that I wanna point out is, is when she loses an officer, you don't see any change in our community, you don't see any change in our police officer when an officer drops off. We don't even know, because he has such a well-oiled machine. Public isn't affected, but where our health is, and I, I'm seeing, I agree with them, I see a hundred percent. And now I see what you're saying, is some of those things could be worked out right now in public works, but, um, the public works we have, but the fact that our community is constantly affected by not having a head is huge. But I think we're getting off topic, like JJ said. Jake, you wanna just pick on topic?
Yeah, I just, uh. There's just a pattern of, you know, this is what we're hearing from the grassroots information sources that we're talking to, and then it, it just, there's always an answer, but there's not a lot of movement on some of these terms. There's always an answer and not a lot of movement, and that's all I'm gonna say, I'm gonna table that for now. If everybody's comfortable with it, I just don't feel like that conversation is going to work, but I really like. And so, that's, I mean, that's, that's the first thing that I wanna talk about. The second thing I wanna talk about is a potential new committee, and try to keep us sharp and on time, so that we're not here all night again, so. Um, the committee that I wanna potentially create, this is just a working title, I do not care what it actually is called, but something like a community insight and development committee, what, as a member from the City Council, or from the planning commission, and that would be open to any and all community members who wanna offer their professional expertise and their insights, I'll develop the community, you know, we have on membership. And we do meetings like this, you know, once a month, uh, and then we open it up and we try to find people who have experience with commercial development, people at the Barneses or the Hudsonsons, we opened up and tried to find people who have, um, community development experience, uh, you know, Jeremy Cobb that was here, you know, he posted, helped host River Fest for years, right? We have people off our community with, uh, I mean, we, we probably, I don't know if there's a way to determine this, but we probably have one of the highest rates of professionals and, 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 and our ci- citizens, you know, I mean, our citizens probably have one of the highest rates of professional, uh, you know, occupations of any city in the state. And we have people that I think if we try to create more buy-in and try to create more opportunities for people to be involved, that people, I, I think that people would want to be involved, and I think we've kinda seen that this past year, as we've opened up these city council positions, that, uh, Mayor, what was the, um, the woman's name who, uh, applied the same time that I did, and now she's working in?
Kind of.
Kind, yeah, um, and see, that's, to me, that is amazing, and it's, you know, we, we have three people come, uh, talk about, you know, wanting to be in City Council a couple of weeks ago. Sheldon, it turns out unfortunately does not live the award, and so I feel like I've completely wasted his time by urging him to apply. But either way, Sheldon is exactly the kind of person that we want to volunteer a couple hours of their time to help look over, I mean, when Randy's having to try to do all the water and sewer budgets right now, you know, having an auditor's help, helps. I mean, it's, you know, and, and, and for Kevin that came in, oh, like, you know, Mayor Holland and I have been trying to figure out how to get the words off of this logo for months. Kevin can do that in five minutes, you know? We have all these people that I think if we create an opportunity for them to buy in and to be more involved, I think we could really get that involvement. And I'll go ahead and just throw in the third thing real quick, we can talk about these kind of as a group. But the third thing on the list is just a potential for a community days event, maybe something like the first Saturday of the month, doesn't have to be that, it's just an example. Where nine AM to noon at Joy House Coffee, or right here in this room, right? Or, now as a y'all, we have coffee, people can come and talk to members of City Government, members of City Hall, as a volunteer basis. I'm sure Randy will be there at the time to, to do some politicking with the, with the electorate, you know, but, uh, for, for any of us who want to be down there those days, or for Rick or Gary, if they happen to be on those days to go and talk to people, answer questions they have, meet people, give people the sense that, and to, to me, what makes Cape Springs special is it is growing and it's modernizing, but it's still a small enough town that you can walk into the Tim Nelson store, and, you know, you, you, we still have this real community spirit that I think that if we, if we aren't making deliberate conscious efforts to preserve them and to, and, and I guess to, uh, to engage with it as much as we can, we run risk of losing it as the city continues to grow. And so, um, the community involvement days are just a, a way in my opinion of trying to get more people, um, talking to each other and involved each other in the city. And the new committee is just, uh, a way in my opinion to, uh, have a group of professionals who, uh, are assisting with city issues. And who can also, um, you know, come to the city with ideas or new resolutions or ordinances, you know, go ahead, Eric.
Um, maybe these two could be tied together, a new committee that has what you're saying, has all these resources and things like that. You know, it might be an artist that wants to, wants the community to know these done, do something a Saturday morning, not, not, that's, you just have to come, or anybody else can, but it's a community event. I think, I think it would be great to, um, you know, have that, have those two tied together, if you're looking at outside resources to get more input, just, just my thoughts.
And this one should be less controversial, I think, you know, hopefully, done that.
But I mean, I think that, I think the committee would be something great to look into, Community Days, especially if it's full of residents and, yeah, Sheldon was, he was gonna help, but I mean, what is it, his masters in finance, wasn't he? I mean, yeah, that's a great person, to come over, for a second set of eyes, because I was born with a lens, for a second set of eyes.
Kim, am I correct that you didn't like, who was it that helped you with Christmas in Cape Springs last year that you said?
It was Lisa, and you guys were like, not, not wanting to have to handle that all by yourself.
Oh, my God.
But, but this committee, you know, if, if we wanna get Cape Springs Days working again, if we wanna have, uh, you know, a group of people to really help with something like Christmas in Cape Springs, I think this is exactly the mechanism to get that done.
Because what happens is, is Lisa and I, we, we are busting our backsides to get the pancake breakfast up and going for Gary, and that's in October.
So I remember.
And as soon as we're, the pancake breakfast is over, then, then we're swapping over to do Christmas in Cape, and.
You have all the information, wouldn't it be great to delegate to the university, and then they can check back with you, because I think it'd be.
I would love that.
As somebody to check, like, to check the balance, and if you have passionate people.
Eric, to volunteer. Get people to, to volunteer. We tried, I mean, we called, I don't know how many people, just to get silent auction baskets for the pancake breakfast.
I called it here before.
And just to get people to donate for that, is practically impossible.
And when there was Cape Springs Days, they had a full committee.
Yeah.
That worked, the day after Cape Springs Days ended, they started work on the next one. And they have done amazing, and Yeoman's work on those two, and then.
I was on that committee and I speak.
Yeah, you can speak.
You know, the hard part about it is that we wanted the city to be involved and our department to be involved. And when we have our planning meetings, we would try to get Mayor, and that was back before your time, but we could not get, we all heard that, but I knew we was there, I think I was on it for six years. But it's all over.
But in fairness too, we need to get people in per, in younger generations involved, that have the energy, that can.
That's it.
And along with people that are from here, that's been here for years and know what they've experienced before.
And we saw those T-shirts out on here, you know, and.
But it should be a team effort, and it's been two, uh, two-person, or in the case of Gary with his bill, three or four-person effort. And on short notice.
Back in the car show days and all that kinds of stuff, I think it was big, and we made a lot of stuff.
Yeah, for those that don't know, it was the biggest car show in Los Angeles, Arkansas. It was huge.
But we had all kinds of people, as to appear that I couldn't ask them, I had, but then there was that one component of the city, and we didn't know what the fire department was planning, and you know, we'd say, would you send somebody out, so we can know, you know, what you all are planning on doing, anyway.
Well, I think the city's in a position now where, uh, you know, one, I know that Randy is very, and the mayor's position is very, very like, community and community event focused, I know that several of us on the council, or that maybe all of us in the council are really focused on trying to get some of this stuff, uh, going again too. And then, um, like, maybe it was Randy who just said, I mean, uh, the population of Cape Springs has, what, doubled since twenty ten almost? And it does, a lot of families just like mine, I mean, it's, it's a range, obviously, but there are a lot of families just like mine who are in their thirties who moved here with their kids, and they are looking for things to get more involved, and you see.
And the community building was the center of it all.
Yes, it was, like I said, some of my earliest memories are in that community building, I'm so glad that we're, we're renovating it, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, but, but getting younger people more involved, I think that that is, I think that's something we need to, again.
See, we had as part of that is the little school down in the Cape Springs, go reunion. We still have some of our, our older people still are requested, but some of us, once we got to be in our eighties, we just couldn't do any more, and we tried to re-open some of those, I think the sixth grade was the last grade that ran there. Those, that age group, we can't get them, we can't take it over.
Yeah.
See, we took it over from the other generation that said they couldn't do it, Pat Simpson and, uh, barely.
I remember Cape Springs Days for years when I was here, I mean, we go back to nineteen ninety-two, nineteen, and it was a big thing.
It moved through three different times, it landed on the time, they did it earlier in the year, and they were so hot and miserable, one year, you couldn't hardly breathe. And then one.
Ice was murky, you know, we had that beauty patch down there by the lake, and that was so calm, you couldn't hear the rocks going.
Yeah.
Everybody, I guess, has a good idea, so.
Yeah.
I just don't realize.
And we can work on how to put that together, and maybe that's.
Just, just me, you, and him, we can get together and like, try to sketch out the actual details, so that we can organize together that the city.
I think it's a resolution.
A resolution, yeah, you're right, I'm sure, right.
Yeah.
And they couldn't see it come back.
Let's, let's do it, let's make it happen, that's, I mean, I, I, I think we've got the right energy, and the right, the right folks at City Government at this point to make it happen, so let's, let's make it happen.
Horse kids, I'm living it. Horse shit of yours.
Anything else?
I, I am, I'm, I've run my horse, anybody else?
I think, uh, I wanted to check on something, you know, if you don't want to, and I wanna make it brief. Um, I just got a text, you probably all got it, from town.
From town, yeah, they switched the.
So, I'm confused about that, yeah, I wanted to verify what's, what's going on with that, because it sounded like we got a nice quiet pump in there, like Erica saw it.
I would, I would, I wanna go and see how loud that pump is.
It was quiet, it was great.
It was wonderful, you can hear.
You know, it had took some doing to get it there, but isn't that worse?
It, they sent notice about six o'clock last night or ten after that it broke down.
Oh, I forgot.
I didn't see, I didn't know that.
And so, and that's.
Erica broke it. I promise you, it was a non-specific.
I'm gonna be following up, because last night's text talked like they would have it fixed mid-afternoon, and it sounds like it wasn't. So I'll be following up at eight o'clock in the morning with the construction company and finding out if you can't fix it, like, early today, replace it with another one, like, and because it's rental, like, have a.
It's a rental, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, that one was ridiculously quiet.
So they got it in there, a pump for half a day or something?
It was, I think it had half a, two days, something like that.
And were they able to, I mean, did they actually like, sleep in their house one of the, one night?
Uh, because.
So they don't, we don't have feedback from them.
On what they did.
He said fantastic when I sent in that text, and then I think it.
But they hadn't, they hadn't triggered.
No, I just, no, because, well, when, he didn't know it was a stop when I called him last night, because they hadn't communicated that with the mayor.
Right, they had left, but then since they were going to do it, and I thought it would be this, this, it was over.
It's admitted, made a motion to the chair.
Got a motion to the chair.
I'll second.